On Facebook Live and now the webinar is live.
Perfect. Okay, thank you and welcome everyone to the Wednesday, May 19, 2021 Cohasset School Committee Meeting. Would all committee members who are currently present, please indicate so in roll call. Mrs. Kaleri?
Present.
Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Mrs. Mar?
Present.
Mrs. Saint Ange?
Present.
And I am present Craig McLuhan. All members are present as of 6:01 PM. This meeting, this otherwise in-person public meeting is being held virtually. Given the governor's declaration of a state of emergency in this Commonwealth. It does not seem to be lasting much longer thankfully. But it is streaming live on Facebook and Cohasset 143 TV. So moving right into the first agenda item, which is public comment. This part of the agenda is reserved for discussion points that are not related to issues that are already noted on the agenda. If your comments have to do with or relate to agenda items, please wait until we reach that portion of the meeting. So I'll give folks a few moments to utilize the Q and A feature with any other comments they would like to share. Okay, I don't see any. So we'll move into the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. And at this point, I turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you Chairman McLuhan. And once again, thank you all for being here. I feel like this is a nightly event for us. Obviously, we had our emergency meeting yesterday to discuss some important changes in the guidance around masking and some other other safety measures. And obviously, I was able to take what we decided yesterday, put it into a summary and send it out to the community. So much of my updating is is taken care of because that was a big piece of it. You know, I'm excited to the students have had have an opportunity now to be a little bit more free in terms of masking in certain outdoor situations. And of course, we're keeping our our current protocols within our buildings. And you know, I know we'll probably have some questions about graduation and prom. But we have Principal Scott here is going to update and kind of review with Principal Mills regarding how things are are going. Since we've been back in full session as we always do when we launch something. We sort of reassessed it at about the six week point, the pattern we've been following, and we're going to do that today. I do know however, that Dr. Scollins has a couple of updates. Talk about a celebration that I want to thank her for recently hosting, but Dr. Scollins, I'll let you highlight it and take it away.
Terrific. Thank you so much, everyone. So nice to see you. So we were able to celebrate our new teachers finally when they started with us. We were in hybrid and we had a lot of restrictions on what we could do about getting together. And normally we have this really nice celebration to welcome them and we just couldn't do it for because of all those restrictions. So the other day we were able to enjoy our beautiful courtyard outside. And we could pull together our mentors, our mentees, building administrators to come and celebrate. So it was really lovely. Marilyn Harden put a Harden put a nice little snack table together for us. And we just sat outside and we chatted and we cheered on our our new teachers. And this is a picture of our our new teachers. As you can see, there's Allison Thornton, Megan Leary, Alex Pierce, Megan Fahey, Allison Baptiste, I'm looking through John Mayer, Lauren Svensson, Julia Dumont and Kaylee Schneider, as well as Stephanie, I'm sorry, you had Stephanie Fagan over there and I had Stephanie Kennedy on the end. So an amazing group of people and we're so thrilled that they joined the Cohasset staff. And then we got a nice picture of our mentors because they do a lot of work with our mentees. They're required to do about 15 hours. They do more than 15 hours a year with our mentees. So I couldn't thank them more for all of their support throughout the year with our with our mentees. And they often stay mentors forever. Even personally for me, my mentor stayed with me forever and even when she retired. So those connections are so important to building relationships and helping our staff to stay in their positions because it's not uncommon for new teachers to feel that fatigue and actually not make that five-year mark, which is interesting. This part of the country, more often you see teachers being able to stay in the bill in their in the building. They just that they started in or at least stay in the field. Other parts of the country, though, they often don't. So the mentorship program is an extremely important part of what we do to keep all those good hires that we have that we have taken on. So so that is that's all stuff sharing, but that was really fun. And then just quick MCAS update because we're in the throes of that. The elementary Deer Hill School is almost done. They had their one of their first remote MCAS today. But they've come moved well into their MCAS. The middle school is in the middle of theirs. They finished up eighth grade. High school is in the middle of theirs. So we are moving along and students seem to be doing fine. And we're surviving the challenges of trying to offer the remote option for those families that that ask for. We haven't had a lot of students do that, but we have had a couple. And that's just been a very interesting experience for all of us, including I'm sure the students and the families at home. So we thank everyone for their cooperation and all their help. This is not a one person show. There's multiple people in multiple departments that helped make this happen are from our IT to our teachers, to our administrators, to ESPs. There's a it is a very involved process. So thank you to everyone who is helping us through, in particular this year, extra special. Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank Dr. Scollins also for the work that she's done with our new teachers to Cohasset. And I should say some of our many of our teachers who are new to Cohasset, they might not be brand new. But one of the features that I really appreciated about Cohasset when I arrived is that we provide a mentor or in some cases, it ends up being sort of a collaborator for anyone who is a new staff member to Cohasset. But of course, as Dr. Scollins said, new teachers who are trying to progress on their license do need to have that mentoring year and then some professional development hours after it. But I'm really proud of the work that Dr. Scollins does and our mentors do. And also really proud that we don't have very high turnover in Cohasset. I think a lot of it is because of these relationships and because of the 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 constant growth that we're able to help with our our teachers. So we're very, very lucky in that. So that was just a very brief overview. We just wanted to talk about a couple of those features. I do have the pleasure of again introducing our student representative who I haven't seen in a bit. And Jenna Gilio, who is our Giulio, who's our junior. And obviously, as updated in the past, will update on what's new in the high school world and the Cohasset world from the students' viewpoint. So Jenna, take it away. Hope everything's going well for you.
Thank you. You too. Hi, everyone. It's great to talk to you all again. This week at Cohasset High School has been very, very busy for the seniors. And I know they are so excited for their prom and their graduation and all the good news regarding their maskless events now. And they're super excited about that. Some other news that everyone has been able to enjoy is the being able to not be able to take our masks off outside and enjoy our beautiful courtyard. And personally, I have found that amazing. I'm outside for like the majority of my day. I eat lunch out there. I have utility out there. It's so nice to be it's it's just awesome. Everyone's so appreciative of it. And our environmental class has been kind of transforming the the courtyard in the library, next to the library. And it looks beautiful. We've been planting some new flowers. We've been ripping up some of the weeds on the outside to make that look nice. So shout out to Doc West for helping us with that. So AP exams also wrapped up and that was interesting with the Osgood situation. But a lot of the teachers made that transition very fun. I know my AP US teacher, Mr. Lavici brought us donuts. We all met at Milk and we walked over together in the morning. And he had like two boxes of donuts and it was super fun. And it got us all really excited just to get in there, take the test and then be done. And I know Mr. McCabe for AP led to the same thing. So the students were really excited about that. Something to look out for just in general in the community is Juneteenth and the diversity projects in the diversity club and what we're doing for the Juneteenth event on the common on Saturday, June 19th to celebrate Emancipation Day and just diversity in general. And Ms. Crimmens, who is my AP Lang teacher, she has been organizing an event for us students to bring to the younger kids to get them involved in the community at Deer Hill and Osgood. So we're going to try to go over to those schools on Friday, June 18th. And we talked to the Deer Hill and Osgood principals today over Zoom and presented them the idea of making a PowerPoint about what Juneteenth is and like a really simplified version for them to understand diversity and have the teacher show that to their students the week leading up to Juneteenth. And then we would go in hopefully that Friday outside, set up little stations for crafts and maybe read alouds for them outside to do socially distance and really understand the importance of diversity. So I'm really looking forward to that. And I know a lot of my other classmates are as well. And I'm super excited to hang out with all the little kids and teach them about diversity. So yeah, it's just everything's been going well for the seniors and I know all the underclassmen are super excited for them. And I'm really excited to see all the photos from Friday and everything. So yeah.
And I'm very, very excited to hear your your excitement about Juneteenth and the work the Diversity Committee is doing. And a lot of great things happening in the district around diversity, inclusion. I know I have some middle school teachers here and they recently did some work around autism and autism awareness, signing a pledge. So you know, you're you're definitely speaking to something that's really important for the district. And I I know it's important to the students. So thank you for highlighting that. And very excited for Juneteenth to to ensure we learn and that we celebrate at the same time. But that's a that's a that's a great combination. And a little shout out to Principal Farrell and her team for hosting all the AP testing. It wasn't we needed it for the spacing with COVID regulations. It wasn't an easy task. And I know we don't have the parking for the students. So thank you to the students for being flexible and respect, respectful about everything that was happening. It must be a surreal experience to go back to your elementary school and take an AP test, which is kind of the pinnacle of an academic test for sure in in the system. But that that seemed to work worked very well. I don't know if it'll be a permanent fixture. But it was we made kind of lemon lemonade out of lemons, I think, in that respect. But it was great and very proud of the students and you for all the work you did to prepare for those really rigorous tests. And of course, the staff do such a great job preparing you. Wonderful. So Chairman McLuhan, I don't know if the committee has any questions specifically for Jenna. You know, it's only a day into the new changes, but it does feel it does feel more normal, which is great to see.
I don't know either. Let's add. Mrs. Kaleri, do you have any questions for Jenna?
I don't have any questions. I just want to relay my excitement Jenna, that you all are leading the district in the Juneteenth celebration. I think it's so fabulous. I know that the elementary kids get super excited when the the cool big kids come and teach them things. And so I think it's phenomenal that you guys are doing that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaleri. Mr. Kearney, do you have any comments?
No, no.
There we go. I'll take that as a no. Mrs. Mar, do you have any?
Yeah.
Hi Jenna, thank you so much for tonight's report and all the reports you've done this year. You and your your co-students have been a terrific asset to our process over the last two years. And I think I I hope it encourages other students to become involved because this is your own little snapshot of what local government looks like. And it's I think it we've certainly learned a lot from you and we appreciate all your efforts. And enjoy the rest of your school year and have a great summer and we'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. Saint Ange?
No questions. Just thanks for the great update. I love hearing how excited everyone is about getting some fresh air. I know the first graders I went to recess with today at my school were equally as excited as you sound about it. So it's nice to just take a deep breath in between classes.
Thank you. I just echo my the comments of my colleagues and Jenna, thank you so much for your participation throughout the year. Great update that you just gave. That was awesome, especially the Juneteenth update, really interesting stuff. And I'm as excited as Mrs. Kaleri is about that. Are you you going into your last year?
Yeah, I'm a junior right now. I'll be a senior next year, which is crazy to think about.
That is exciting stuff. So a big year coming up for you. But thank you so much for taking time out of your your school week intermittently throughout the year to share your thoughts and your perspectives and to participate in this process. Thank you so much, Jenna.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Dr. Sullivan.
Have a good night, Jenna.
You too.
Thank you. So if I can move on to the next item, next item very excited about is our spotlight on learning. And once in a while, well, pretty often, actually, we have very interesting projects happening within the district. And one such project which we have, I'm going to let Principal Mills introduce his team in a second. But we have a couple of wonderful middle school social studies teachers here. And then, of course, we have our Director of Technology and Digital Learning, Lisa Raden. And I was happy to see this collaboration that's going on throughout the district with Lisa helping with technology and kind of adding a a voice to the choir here to to make sure that our learning is as engaging as possible for our students. And in some ways, redefining for our students. And this, I think, is one of those projects that checked off those boxes. So I will let Principal Mills and welcome Principal Mills to welcome your crew. Tell us who you have here. I know we have some students who are going to talk a bit about their projects as well. So Principal Mills, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Funny, when you have the spotlight on a school, it's it's great to sort of welcome the opportunity to share what happens. But really, this it's things that happen every day at CMS that I I think, you know, we're really proud of. In our classrooms, every day I see teachers encouraging kids to step out of their comfort zone to, you know, work towards taking on new challenges because it it produces tremendous growth. And and even when things don't go exactly right, there's still a lot to learn from it. And like I said, I see teachers do this every day. I think particularly this year and just recently, two members of our social studies department modeled that mindset. Eileen Weislinger, who's our sixth grade geography and ancient Civ teacher, and Erin Ryan, who's our seventh grade geography and ancient Civ two teachers took that mindset where they really did step out of what they're used to for instruction and tried something really new. It took a collaboration with IT, the Director of Technology, a lot of vision, a lot of patience, a lot of hard work and tremendous kids, which we we have plenty of. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce, we'll start with our sixth grade teacher, Eileen Weislinger. So Eileen?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting us to share this with you. We're super excited about it. And I'm here with four of my students.
I'm Charlie Mott.
Hi, I'm Grace Kirin.
I'm Molly Campbell.
And I'm Colton Glenn.
Hi, guys. Welcome.
Okay.
I turned I turned off the dismissal bell today. They don't realize school got out hours ago.
I know. They've been in my room all afternoon. I wasn't sure what to do with them anymore after a while. And it's actually I learned from the students as opposed to the other way around. They're Minecraft experts and I I had never been in this world before. So there was all kinds of learning going on. I want to again, thank you all so much for inviting us and giving us the opportunity to share this with you. I'm going to just give you a little bit of background and tell you about Minecraft. I'm sorry, Microsoft Education or Minecraft Education, the project itself. And then my students here who you just met will share some of the impact on learning that they experienced. I think there's there's most powerful coming directly from them. So to start with, when I was first introduced to micro, excuse me, Minecraft education several years ago, I recognized the incredible learning potential that it had and that it could offer students. So earlier this year, I approached Principal Mills with the idea to incorporate Minecraft into our study of Egypt. And he embraced the idea wholeheartedly and suggested that I reach out to Lisa Raden. I'm not sure which one was more enthusiastic, but I think Lisa gets the prize because, correct me if I'm wrong. It might have been in under a week. She had already arranged a meeting with the Minecraft, the Minecraft folks at Microsoft. It was pretty exciting. She was very excited. And then at that point, we invited my colleagues, Erin Ryan and Stephanie Noble to join us. So we had that initial meeting and that was it. We were off and running. There's a huge debt of gratitude that I want to give to Dan Kelly and Kyle Hannan. They were instrumental in allowing us to to pursue this initiative. And they took care of all of our tech needs. They were hands-on in the classroom every step of the way, ensuring that students were able to download the app, enter the world and begin building. We had our bumps, but on the whole, it was a huge success. I want to now get into Minecraft itself a little bit. And Principal Mills, I'm not sure if you were going to share one of the worlds that everyone can see as I described.
Sure. Sorry. Let me try that one more time. Here we go.
Wonderful. So if you're not familiar with Minecraft, it's amazing. It's an immersive 3D game-based learning platform. What I love most about it is that it requires 21st century skills, including, the list is going to go on and on, creativity, critical thinking, problem solving, self-direction, collaboration, leadership, teamwork, and just so many other skills that students are going to need in life as they as they go on. The game itself is about placing and mining blocks. It's really very similar to Legos, except in an online environment. The game worlds consist of selected biomes. And in our case, because we were studying ancient Egypt, we chose a desert biome. And it has 3D objects that are mainly, they're cubes that represent grass, dirt, stones, wood, all kinds of wars, tools, animals, foods, everything that was needed for our project. It also includes what are called NPCs or non-player, non-player characters. And they were critical to this assignment. This is how students conveyed the content and their understanding. The NPCs also help to enhance writing and visualization, reading comprehension, and really increases student voice and student choice. I'm going to share a little bit more about what those NPCs are in just a minute. The project itself was the culmination of our study of ancient Egypt. Students had read the text and used other materials that gave them a broad foundation of the ancient world. So that was the pre-setup. And then for the Minecraft project itself, we shifted more to a jigsaw method. That's where students become expert in one area and we used Grapes as a framework. Grapes is an acronym for the primary elements of a civilization, geography, religion, achievements, GRA, politics, economy and social structure. Students were grouped and then assigned one of the grapes. From there, that that was it. That's all the instruction they were given. They relied on one another to plan, to prototype, and then build their part of the ancient Egyptian world. Collaboration was key, if not critical, and students relied on one another and others for help. So not only did students have to collaborate with one another, those in their group, there was occasion where they also had to go across groups. So for example, the achievement achievements group built the pyramids. But then the religion group built the burial chamber that was to go inside the pyramid. So the religion group was required to share and explain the plans they had for the burial tomb inside the pyramid so that nothing was altered or destroyed that was significant to the achievements group. So they worked together across all areas in that way. The NPCs, so those are what I mentioned earlier. Students created an NPC really to tell the story in writing. We had great fun, all of us, learning, learning how to create them. I think initially we broke more of our world than built, but we got it down. And so once you create an NPC, you click on it and what will appear is a little text bubble. And that's where something is described to the viewer. It could be something like who the NPC is, what they achieved, or maybe how something was done. For example, outside of one of our pyramids, there was an NPC. When you clicked on it, we learned that it was Howard Carter. And he explained to us when and how King Tut's tomb was discovered. Then when you entered the pyramid, there was another NPC and that was Tut himself. And he explained how each of the artifacts that were buried with him would help him in the afterlife. Then as you went a little further along, there was another that represented a special priest who explained the embalming and the mummification process, et cetera. Some students chose to, you you have the option of using a great big blackboard. So they had a solid wall and on a blackboard, they would write, you know, the the content as they understood it. And then finally, once students completed their section of the ancient Egyptian world, they used Screencastify to video and it was the video of the world and then their audio presenting what they had included and why. They shared their videos with me and then we took a class period and we watched each of the videos in the order of grapes. And that gave students a complete summary of the entire study of ancient Egypt. That's it in a nutshell. What I'd love to do now, though, is invite my my friends here to share with you from their perspective the experiences and the impact on learning that was offered to them through Minecraft. Okay, do you want to go first?
Hi, everyone. I'm Charlie Manawall. I I just wanted to come over, come here and talk because I I honestly really enjoyed this project. It honestly might be my favorite all-time school project I have ever done. And the reason was because it was graded like a test, but it wasn't, it wasn't a test. Like I got really engaged into this. What are I remember what our group did was we made it like on our Screencastify. We we started on a boat and we went like, oh, I arrived in Egypt and this is all this stuff. And like you can't, you can't do that on a true or false quiz, can you? So I honestly thought we you got really engaged in it and you can't build it if you just crammed. You've got to actually understand it. You need to know the stuff. You can't have just taken all last night and stayed up until 12 o'clock studying textbook and then forgetting it a week later. And and finally, I I may have learned more about ancient Egypt in this study than I have in any other test or quiz or anything like that in my life ever. Excuse me. So I I honestly learned a ton about that. I I thought that I knew, coming into this, I thought I knew a ton about Egypt, but there was so much more to learn. And it was very interesting and honestly, one of my, one of my favorites. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Charlie. Great job.
Hello, I'm Grace Kirin. So basically, this Minecraft project brought a lot of creativity and let the students immerse themselves in the world. Minecraft was very engaging and we learned way more than we could have from reading a textbook or Karamian studying for a test. We got to build ancient Egypt and not just study it, which was very helpful. And it will definitely help me down the road because this project was so different than everything, anything I've ever done. So definitely down the road in like high school or college, when I need to remember ancient Egypt, I'll always remember this project and building it. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Great job.
Hello, I'm Molly Campbell and I just want to say this project has brought a great experience to sixth grade and everyone who did this project. This was a lot less stressful for everyone. And I thought that the test and quizzes are up to like that one question and you don't know what to do. And it's all up to that and then submit it and then boom, you're done. But this project, you can fix your mistakes and you have time. And it was like we were in the world and it it was a great group project and everything. And I thought that it was a lot less stressful for everyone, not just me, but quizzes and tests just. but quizzes and tests just make me really stressed and stuff. So I feel like this project has been amazing and it will never be forgettable. And this project was amazing. So thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Great job.
Hi, I'm Colton Blaine. I wanted to say something about what I was really thinking. So I don't have that much engineering or artistic ability. So say I were to build like, I can't really build sculptures or write posters. I would really be the people like planning and stuff like that. But in this, this allows everybody to be engaged in the game and play and it's really easy for everybody. And it was also pretty fun to teach the teacher a little bit. And, well, thank you.
Great job, Colton. Some great points there. Thank you.
Teach the teacher a lot of it. Thank you. They're amazing. Erin, it would be great for you to share your experience.
Oh, yes. Thanks so much. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I want to echo a lot of what Eileen said and what she shared already because it was very much a similar experience, I would say, in the seventh grade. I'd also like to thank everyone who supported us, Principal Mills, Lisa Raden, our incredible IT team, and of course, my mentor, Eileen. She really helped me through this as well and the students. We have to give them props because they really did, in many cases, I agree with Colton, teach us a thing or two, which was so wonderful. So I used Minecraft as an option in our GeoSiv 2 unit that we did on the Greco-Persian Wars. So in the past, traditionally, students made a 3D battle build based on one of the battles that happened during those Persian wars. And they would use canvas and clay and paint and other mixed media materials. And I thought, wow, this Minecraft education addition would be a perfect fit as an option for students. So many of them jumped on board. They worked in small teams. They did some research and they just sort of went off and just went running and just took it to a whole new level, which I absolutely adored. And I knew very little about Minecraft. I knew what it was. And I'd always been a big champion of high-quality educational games. So as soon as Eileen told me about it and Lisa approached me, I jumped on board. It sounded like a lot of fun and I love having a lot of fun. So I said, let's do this. Let's try it out. Let's see what happens. So I really appreciated that too, the sort of experimental exploratory nature of everything. It sort of liberated all of us to just try new things and have some fun with it. So what impressed me most about how interactive this tool was, was also how student-driven it was. So to see the students take it and to immediately start thinking creatively together, to communicate with each other, to make mistakes together and laugh it off and figure out solutions together. And then to just really take full control of their experience, I just thought was outstanding. And to take full control of their learning as well, to hear and to walk around the room and hear these conversations where real content was being discussed and all these strategies were being made and people were taking ownership for different things and, and different ideas were popping up just left and right. It was fabulous. So the teamwork was outstanding. I thought the final products and the presentation, students presented it to their peers and took us on tours in class, which was great. All of it ended with us having learned a heck of a lot, I think, just from the tools that we were learning to use, but also the content that we were learning as well, which was great. And like I said, they helped me too. So I was trying to find one of the student groups and a student just said, you know, you can just teleport to me. I said, oh yeah, of course, I could just teleport. How do I do that? So they showed me how to teleport. Now I know how to do that. So it's really cool to learn a thing or two. And so, yeah, so I thought it was a wonderful experience all around. And I do it again in a heartbeat. I'm already trying to think about new ways. And I've heard from a couple of students that they're interested in continuing to explore that and maybe return to it in future units. So it's really great. And I would love to introduce one of my students who approached me and asked me if we can maybe do this again sometime, which is wonderful to hear. And he's joined us tonight and his name is Adrian Sayes. So Adrian, whenever you're ready, if you want to tell us a little bit about your experience, that would be great.
Good. Hello. So Minecraft was a way to really like do school, but a lot more fun. It was really just fun and engaging. And with Minecraft, you had a lot of creative freedom about what you wanted to do. Like you could like choose if you wanted to like, what I did is we destroyed like a, we basically like made a crevice in like the mountainside to like make. So basically, we did the Battle of Thermopylae for hours and we basically just, like, we had to make the whole mountain pass and stuff like that. And it gives a lot of creative freedom about how we wanted to place the troops. Like you can see in the video right there that the, those are like the Persian troops, the ones in the armor right there. And we just, like, you could use like armor stands to make the Persians. It was also just really simple and easy to use. The controls were easy. The, like, getting onto the game was easy. You could just like press the app and then boom, you'd be in there in like 30 seconds. And you have just so many tools at your disposal too with Minecraft. You can like, I'm not sure exactly how many, but there are so many different types of blocks that you can use for texture and to make everything look cool. And it's just really accessible too. Like it's just there whenever you need it. And another thing I want to say is that it was also really useful because it makes like group projects like less crowded around like a certain area. Like normally, if you're doing kind of like a clay project or model, everyone's just kind of centered around like one area where the whole thing is. But with this, you can like kind of space out but be in the same place at the same time. And it was also just obviously really fun and I think that it's definitely worth doing again.
Thank you, Adrian. Great job. Really, really great presentation there. Thank you.
I want to thank both Erin and Eileen for, not just for coming tonight and their students, but really modeling speed and taking risks. It is, you know, as they said, this is brand new. But really beyond that, just as teachers, I mean, they adopted a constructivist approach. I don't know if you got the sense that this, these projects weren't done after the study of Thermopylae, after the study of Egypt. It was the study. So that I was in Eileen's room day one, they hadn't done anything on Egypt. They introduced the Minecraft and then the kids learned, you know, the, the, their responsibilities, whether it's geography or economics. They, their, their interest, they drove it and then constructed the sense, the knowledge that they constructed through their studies and they were able to share it through Minecraft. So it's really the highest form of learning. It was so advanced. And they pulled that off in a way that made the kids so excited and as you can see, so engaged. So, you know, really hats off to, to both teachers and Stephanie Noble as well and Lisa NIT. But they, they really, I can't thank them enough for modeling now for the whole faculty as well as all our kids. You know, that spirit of experimentation and trying something new. So wonderful job, guys. I couldn't be more proud of you and kids as well. Couldn't be more proud of everybody.
Thank you, Principal Mills. Any members of school committee have any comments or questions for either the faculty members or the students?
I would just like to say how impressed I am by the presentations and how much I appreciate that this opportunity is available to our students. And I just want to say, I could very much relate to, I think it was Colton who said that he doesn't feel like he's really so into the art or the creative part of things because I do distinctly remember trying to build a pyramid out of poster board when I was in school and it not going so well. So I'm really glad that you all really enjoyed this experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaleri. Mr. Kieran, do you have any, any comments or thoughts?
Yeah, I echo same thing. You know, to hear that it's fun and something that's going to leave a lifetime impression. I, I just, I'm so happy for the teachers and students. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Kieran. Mrs. Marr.
Thanks very much. I have a question, I don't know for the teachers or the students. When you're in this and, and if you're building, we'll say the geography group. If you're building, if you decide to build a pyramid that's square as opposed to the shape that we all know a pyramid is, does the programming correct you and say that's not true to history?
I think we can answer that.
So like there was no like correction in Minecraft. The kids were like free to build whatever they want and whatever shape. So like if they built like square by accident, there was no correction. So they had to design a pyramid that would like look like the real pyramids of Egypt.
And I have a second question, maybe from Miss, Mrs. Raden. Are there other applications in Minecraft for other academic disciplines that might be available?
Oh, yes, there are. When we met with Microsoft Education Team, they definitely showed us the different lesson plans and the Microsoft Education Community online. There are a number of examples and additional professional development around how to use Minecraft in, in many disciplines, including SEL and, and other applications. Digital citizenship, just, just a number of. I downloaded a world of Florence, Italy, where I used to live, just so I could walk around and tour it. So there's a lot of different ways to use Minecraft.
And, and one more follow-up question. So are there applications for special education students who might have difficulty learning in a traditional way?
Absolutely. I mean, this is, right, a great opportunity for diverse learners to, to learn with a differentiated type of instruction here. So, yeah, I think, you know, what John said, it's, it's a kind of technology that really has transformed the learning experience and given the students a different way of expressing themselves and showing what they know and the knowledge that they have. So there's a, there's a number of, of opportunities that we can, we can use this tool for.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marv.
Yes, thank you. I just think that the kid's enthusiasm about this project speaks for itself. But just in terms of teaching, it's just awesome to see kind of this best practice application of Minecraft, like giving choice and voice, experiential project-based learning, growth mindset, like everything we are looking for in a classroom and an awesome teaching is happening in this project. I'm, I'm pretty jealous, actually. I, I'm also a teacher now. I'm like, just wrote a note to myself, like immediately find out how to apply this in my classroom. So I'm just impressed by all of you. So thank you so much for sharing tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. To me, this is exactly the type of learning we need in our schools. This is so much more meaningful and effective, Mrs. Weislinger and Mrs. Ryan, than speaking at students as they're reading an excerpt, excerpt from a textbook or on a tablet or on a laptop. This is something that will stay with them. It will cause them to really remember what the Battle of Thermopylae was all about and who was involved. And it's just a really robust, meaningful project-based learning experience. And this is what we need to see more of in our school district. So I absolutely commend you two on bringing such a meaningful unit to the, the experience of our students in this way and utilizing very appropriately this day and age technology to do so and utilizing Mrs. Raden and her expertise, who by the way, if everyone's watching at home doesn't know who Mrs. Raden is, she's our Director of Technology. Might be instructional technology, might be the official title. I actually don't know. The official title is Director of Technology, basically. So for our learning technology, she assists obviously in this type of way. So Bravo, I really commend you. That is excellent. And the kid's presentation, as Mrs. St. Orange commented, the, the passion and the enjoyment that they, that they had and found in this is, is clearly evident from their presentation. And they obviously gained a lot and learned a lot from this. And you are, you are obviously gifted practitioners and thank you so much.
Wonderful. So yeah, I have to just say a quick thank you to Ms. Weislinger, Ms. Ryan, Ms. Raden. Students, you're amazing. A real tribute to co-asset students. And your, your enthusiasm is inspiring to me. I, I love seeing that. It really made my day. So thank you for that. Yeah, anything else, Principal Mills? Obviously, you got a great team, did a great job highlighting some wonderful learning taking place in your amazing school. So anything you want to conclude with?
No, just, I mean, not take anything away from the work. Eileen and Erin is amazing. But I, you know, we're really fortunate to have a faculty that on any given week or in any month of the year, you could probably turn a spotlight on a classroom and find something going on. So we're just fortunate to be able to share the work that's going on in their classroom.
Great. Wonderful. Well, thank you all, students. Thanks. Have a great night and thank you, Ms. Ryan, Ms. Weislinger. And Mr. Mills, you're going to stay on for, and Ms. Raden, of course, for being here. You're going to stay on for the next, next section. And I'll let the, the teachers and students get some much deserved rest. So thank you all for being here and for everything you do every day to help our kids. Okay, so as I, if I can move on, Chair McCollum, if that's appropriate. Okay, super. So as we, as I mentioned earlier in the, the meeting, we typically, when we launch major things, would review, we'd be doing it all year at a six-week point and we've had certain milestones. And this is one of those where we've been back full in person about six weeks, a little longer at the, the middle school. And again, the high school was, all students are back. It was just a little bit more give because of the going home for last period. And that has been switched since the end of last month. So here we are. And I, I don't know that this needs to be an exhaustive review, but I did want to give the committee an opportunity to answer any questions, not answer, to ask any questions that you might have of Principal Mills and Principal Scott. Maybe Principal Mills just review a little bit about how things are going. What are some of the things you've overcome since you've had the kids back in? And anything you might be kind of looking forward to as you move to the end of the year and really building in a next year.
So I, I would say we were all so having everyone back on April 5th. I think when we looked at the, the school and our hybrid plan, we, there were a lot of built-in strengths. We were careful with the schedule to make sure classes were all, you know, almost equally sized as, as, you know, within reason. So that once we had to go back to, you know, twice the number of kids, we didn't have classes that didn't work or had to be broken up. We didn't have to change schedules. We're fortunate with the, the size of the classrooms in the middle school that we were able to have everyone back and maintain social distance in the class. So that, that went well. I think the guidelines that we established at the beginning of the year and followed, I think the faculty and students really, they did a great job of adapting to those. So by April, it was just second nature to move around the building and with some of the, the transition and scheduling things we've done, that to have all the kids back, we just maintained everything. And, and that was pretty seamless. Really, the only challenge that we, well, that we faced before we got back was what to do with our lunches because two lunches times twice the kids, we wouldn't be able to fit them all. So we, working with the faculty, we did sort of modify the schedule a, a little bit at a third lunch. So we're able to accommodate all the kids safely for lunch. And then that created a little bit of more structured, non-academic time for either SEL activities or remediation, but also for outdoor time, like mask breaks. So, you know, we, we kind of turned that around. So it was a positive. At this point in that time, our grade, each grade level sort of has a different approach, whether with the younger kids, where teachers take the kids out for more mask breaks and what they'll do is actually they'll go for a walk. With a single group in our eighth grade, they'll divide up and, and bring kids to the football stadium. And if students want to stay back because they have academic work, we have one that stays back. Kind of challenge allowed us, we found a solution that
having a little tech technical difficulties.
Yeah, I think probably the Wi-Fi connection is weak where Principal Mills is.
Yeah. Well, I guess then, yeah, it looks like he, he might indeed be frozen here.
Either that or he's deliberate thought right now. Either that or he's deliberate thought right now.
Yes, he's good to be good to be doing that. We will, I guess we'll move on then. Just, you know, he's probably getting to some other points, I'm sure, but we'll move back to him. We do have Principal Scott here. Who can do nothing like so seamless transition here, we call it.
Kids taught him how to teleport. So he's
Yeah, right. He's probably doing that right now. So Principal Scott, I guess, you know, just to review a little bit about what you've been going through and some of the things you've overcome and what you want to move to doing as you move into the next year and the rest of the year. And clearly you got a lot going on the next couple of weeks. So feel free to talk about anything regarding that as well.
The return back has been good. You know, it's definitely to echo what John said, it's good to have everybody back in the building. There is a different energy. I think everybody appreciates that regardless of what you know, your position on protocols and this and that is. So that's been, that's been positive for sure. You know, when we came back in, there was a little bit of measured risk, which I think was was thoughtfully done. I know that the initial two weeks with lunch was a little bit disruptive for some, but I thought it was really smart. I'm glad we did it. It provided a much smoother transition that ended up kind of aligning with faculty vaccines, which was really good because it allowed us to kind of absorb the spike that came out of April vacation. And if it hadn't lined up, I think there would have been a lot more risk in terms of teachers getting infected, which is more difficult to manage as a school because of sub coverage and stuff like that. So I thought, you know, all in all, I think it was nicely planned. I think now we're on the other side of it. We're probably a little bit more conservative than some of the state and federal guidance. But you know, that's kind of been the way the year has gone. And, you know, I think that that our process, you know, we've stayed true to it. We've let the medical people make medical decisions and the school people make school decisions and the parents make decisions on behalf of their kids. And I think that that's served us well. So and I think we're in a pretty good position right now. I like that, that hopefully it'll be a little bit looser for prom and graduation. I think the kids certainly appreciate it and the weather has certainly helped. So cross your fingers for that.
Okay, just to reiterate, we, the students do not have to wear masks at prom. I know I did send that out there in case people are wondering about that. But they will have to wear masks when they're on the shuttle buses that are going between pictures and the in the actual prom, because they're on a bus. So that's just something that we're going to have to make sure students do. In terms of graduation, they won't have to wear masks at graduation. And I'm told at this point, the position of our health officials is that our participants, and I should say our attendees, anybody coming to the graduation will not have to wear masks either. So that is that's I know I think it makes for in for many ways a more natural and engaging experience for everyone. So that that's a good thing. I'm happy to see that. So Principal Mills, I know you, we caught you in a freeze in the middle of a thought. And then I clumsily transitioned over to Brian, but if you have anything else to finish, we'll let you do that and then we'll open it up to questions. Go ahead, John.
I'm not sure when I cut out, so sorry about that. But yeah, the only little bit of unforeseen challenge is just getting kids to into the building and in the class on time. And, you know, we'll enforce some tardy policy and communicating with parents. So I know we'll be able to get on top of that. So yeah, sorry about that. Sort of iffy internet connection right now.
No, it's fine. We actually got most of it. It was something right after you said, I think you said the word Minecraft. And then that was that we didn't hear you. I'm just kidding.
Good evening. Yeah.
No, you got pretty much to the end. I I think the I think we we've covered enough to give the committee a perspective. And then, of course, anybody watching who might have any questions. And I want to really want to publicly thank Principal Scott, Principal Mills for their work. Just your own work, just as I thanked Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell, you know, they're they're the representatives of a whole team that's working together to to make this work for our kids. And there are a lot of, you know, sleepless nights and really tough decisions along the way. And they just did a great job with it. So I'm really proud to be part of their team. So any questions you have, feel free to feel free to ask. I'll leave it to you, Chairman McClellan.
Thank you. Any members of EPAD have comments? Let us know, Mrs. Kaleri.
I don't have any questions. I just have one comment, and that is, I feel like our district is so fortunate to have all of you in leadership positions because I think you all have done so much hard work to carry us this far, and I am grateful. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaleri. Mr. Kearney.
Again, I'll echo what Ashley said. Yes, this has been a trying year and the teachers and the administrators have done a great job. And and John, I would just wanted to, I know this has been an issue is is getting the kids in the school building on time. And I was I was going to ask, what can we do to help that go along? Is it something we can look at during the summer? About how the traffic is going to flow? Because I know it's a big issue there with you guys.
Yeah, I, you know, I would really encourage parents for the fall to have, you know, students take the bus, they get to school on time. You know, I look at it, you know, two thirds of the year, the first two thirds, we were only able to offer the buses at the middle school to just the sixth graders and and very few sixth graders took advantage of it. And, you know, as a parent too, when you drive your kids to school in the morning, it's special time and it's nice to be able to start the day by, you know, wishing kids, you know, a good day as they're hopping out of the, you know, the car or the truck right in front of the school. I I think a lot of our families got into that routine and it's a really good one. So, you know, that I I'm not surprised that we're, you know, we're kind of seeing a lot of people now driving. I think for the fall, though, if we can take full advantage of the buses, I think it would help kids get to school on time. It would help their, you know, the relationships that they're not walking into class late. I would encourage families to do that in the fall.
It's also going to help out with our high school drop off too, of course, because if you have more middle school students and high school students, but obviously the middle school students who aren't able to drive, it makes sense to have them take the bus. It helps the traffic all around.
Perfect. Yeah. So and a question for Brian. Brian, do you see anything that we can do to open anything up because the seniors are leaving? Is that going to give us any more space?
When you say open things up, what exactly are you?
I mean, is is there any, I was just saying, is there anything different that we can do now that there's less kids in the room? I wouldn't know the details, but I was just asking if there's any plans because there's, you know, a hundred less kids in the building.
Yeah, I mean, that always helps pre COVID, post COVID, whatever. It's when the seniors are going, it's it's nice. It's nice for them, but it's nice for everybody else too. Because you can focus. The last, the last year and a half has definitely been senior heavy on purpose. And definitely these next two weeks, the focus is really on the seniors. But you know, when when they're gone, we have two thirds of the kids in the building that have really had not a full year of a of a traditional high school experience. And so to be able to kind of turn our attention to them, do a little bit of recalibration, which I think can be good, and do some relationship building, all of that stuff's going to be very positive. So, you know, we'll take full advantage of the weather and all the spaces and whatever the gathering limits are for some field days and and team building stuff. So I'm looking forward to that for sure.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, it shouldn't go unsettled. We have almost a full month with those juniors, sophomores and freshmen to do that work. It's going to pay off. It's very, it's a it's a real, real opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kearney, Mrs. Mar.
Thank you, Chairman McClellan. For maybe obvious or not so obvious reasons, I've started a lot of reflection on cohesive public schools and thinking back, you know, when I saw this on the agenda, this really just happened six weeks ago, but it really began last summer. And when we look at the whole process of getting the students back and not not going 100% remote and getting students in as much as we could, and then seeing that we didn't need Wednesdays for full cleaning and getting students back in on Wednesdays and then getting elementary kids back in and touch point after they returned to school full time. And now this touch point for our middle and high school students, it is a it's makes me feel very proud to be part of this district that has taken such a measured, thoughtful, careful, collaborative approach to doing the most important thing we do, which is getting our kids in school. And I dare say we have led the South Shore, if not the greater Boston area in public schools in doing so. There are still many schools, you know, that that had to backtrack and figure out how to get school kids back in when the commissioner said it's time to get them back in. And we were already ahead of the curve. And that's a testament to Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scollins, Principal Scott, Principal Mills, Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell and the entire leadership team and Mrs. Owen and Mrs. Radden to do so. And I really think you should all feel very, very proud of what you've done. Because it's kind of miraculous in what what we've been through, what everyone's been through. And to have a prom without masks and to have a graduation where everybody can go is just, it's just really incredible. And all I can say is how proud I am to be associated with all of you. So that that I do have a question, though, perhaps for Mrs. Owen. We have a lot of materials that we've purchased and there's a lot of tables and things like that. Where do they go? Now that we're back, like, and and where do the tents go? Like, do we have storage for all of this stuff? Or I don't know, I think tables are stacked up in the gym or
Some desks in the gym.
Or tables, I'm probably using the wrong language, but we bought a lot of stuff. And I'm just
I was just assuming we're going to keep it in Dr. Sullivan's basement.
Yeah, 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 right. I don't have the room, the basement, but a chair, never mind anything else. Go ahead, Sue. I can help you with it, but you can.
Well, I mean, we still have like seven trailers parked at the music, the music circus with extra leftover furniture that once school's out, we're going to plan a couple of days where we get out there, we deliver the trailers to each school, have the principals go through and and kind of purge, you know, the stuff that we don't need. And then point out the things that we're going to keep. We may have to rent pods at this point, because we had this conversation today in our administrative meeting. And we don't have a whole lot of space for any of it. But the music circus wants us out by the end of June, so we have to at least start the process. We may, you know, we're considering working with the town. The procurement office would like to auction off a lot of the stuff if we can to reap some of the some of the finance, financial pieces back. The tents, we haven't really thought that far ahead of where we're going to store the tents, or maybe we'll keep the tents. They've been a great asset. And I mean, it's great to see everybody else sight under those tents every day. It's I don't know, Pat, if you have, I mean, a lot of this, we're going to continue to use.
Yeah. It's a no, you're you're, I wouldn't disagree with anything you said. I think that one of the good things is that we are able to kind of weed out some of the clutter in our rooms. I say that lovingly because, you know, I certainly the rooms right now aren't exactly the best learning situations. You know, there is some furniture that we could use. I'll give you some examples, like some of the horseshoe tables for reading and obviously for dining purposes, the lunch tables are in many ways better than the smaller desks, but we had no choice in that because of the the distancing. So those will be going back. We all have the new desks. We do have some new desks. We'll replace all the old desks. So we're not going to want for a desk in our middle and high school that is, you know, will have all any old desk will go. We're going to be able to throw away material that isn't useful anymore. We've already started that process. And then, you know, there is going to be a need for some storage. There's no doubt about it. I don't think our problem is unique. I think every district is sort of looking at the same same problem. We definitely will sell what we can and get get some, you know, encumber some money back for the town and the school, schools. But we do have a bit of a storage problem to solve. We're going to, we're going to need some storage at least somewhere in our district where we can put some furniture that isn't really something we want to discard. And keep in mind, we also, you know, we're still hedging because we don't know, a lot of our trailers are filled up with our cafeteria furniture. We don't really know yet. Hopefully, we'll know sooner than later what's going to happen with lunch next year. Are we going to be still in a spread out situation where we have to keep our current format? Or can we indeed replace those desks with the tables? A lot of it is dependent upon that timing. So I know, I know that's not a perfect answer, but it's just indicative that we don't have a perfect answer yet. But we do understand the benefits and some of the negatives of it. And we're really thinking about it. Very thankful. We have people like Glenn Pratt working in the district who who's been very creative and helpful with us. And honestly, just a lot of people in the town who have allowed us to social music circus, the senior center, you know, to store either buses or or furniture and trailers in their lots while we try to get through this very atypical situation. So it's that's not, that's going to be something we're solving into the summer. I guarantee that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. Stenage.
I only have compliments. I think you guys are awesome. It's so much to juggle and you have so many balls in the air still. And you are doing it beautifully. And I'm so impressed you come in here so calm and clear in your delivery. And I know you may not feel that way on the inside, but but man, are you guys good at being calm on the outside? And that makes all the difference. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Stenage. You know that I think the the world of both you, but no, everyone has to listen to me enough. So and I got to keep the meeting moving and get you guys out of this meeting. So I have nothing further to add. And Dr. Sullivan, if that concludes this portion, maybe we can move on to the next topic here.
Yeah, I just also want to publicly thank the school committee for your support all through this. And, you know, Ellen's words and clearly she has this meeting and the next meeting, you know, it's just indicative of the very classy approach that she's shown throughout the time I've known her here. But those words were really appreciated. And I think they absolutely represent the work this team does. So I'm also very proud of them. You know, I think you're, you should all give yourselves a pat on the back too, because it's not a not a high paying job you've taken. And it's certainly a very worthwhile one and meaningful one. So thank you for all that. And that does conclude. Well, we have another one other matter that's actually under the superintendent's report to discuss. But that concludes this part of it. And I will let Principal Mills and Principal Scott go. And thank you, gentlemen, for your work tonight and throughout the year. Okay, so our next, our next item, if I can move to that, Chairman McClellan, is is a revisiting of some of our kindergarten tuition. We, you know, are very, very thankful for Sue Owen, our Director of Finance Operations, for her creativity and good work on this and really thoughtful deliberating. And maybe, Miss Owen, you can talk a bit about where we stand right now with kindergarten tuition and what what we may be able to do for the committee's consideration.
Okay. So, you know, hearing the community and the kindergarten families' concerns about tuitions, but knowing on the flip side, we still had to we still had to cover the salaries for all our teachers and our ESPs and those programs. You know, I put my thinking cap on and, you know, I collaborated with some other business managers and said, you know, what what can we do to be creative? I don't know if there's going to be money left at the end of the year yet. So I did reach out to the Department of Education Grants Person, our grants person who is handling the S R one, two, and possibly S R three, which they've talked about. And I asked the question straight out, you know, can we offset some of our kindergarten tuition fees if we reduce the amount of the tuition that that parents were paying? And she said, absolutely. We're not really certain at this point exactly what we're getting from S R three, or when we're getting S R three. But she did confirm that. And I've got it in an email just to be safe that we can utilize that to maybe consider giving back a portion of a refund of the tuitions for the parents. So that's, I mean, that's up for discussion with the school committee on the direction you want to go, but at least we do have that option. I don't know if that, you know, there's anything else you want to elaborate on, Craig, or?
No, I mean, Um, no, I mean, I'll, I'll just, I'll just get right to the, the school committee members and whatever questions or comments and deliberation they want to have about this, so that we can hopefully come to, uh, bring this issue to a conclusion here tonight with finality. And arrive at a decision in terms of what we're gonna do, um, with this issue. Uh, Mrs. Colery.
So do we know what that translates in a sense?
Well, we can't spend, so, so the, the S R money, um, is somewhere in the three hundred, supposedly the three hundred thousand mark, um, not sure. Um, I haven't seen any, you know, wording recently about when we'd be receiving it. Um, we can only, she, she did say that we need to be conservative and we cannot spend the whole amount. Um, we can put a portion, like, we have to put a portion to, towards closing learning gaps. We have to put a portion of it towards, um, mental health. So, I mean, I'm coming up with a number, you know, I can, I can ballpark, you know, one hundred and ten, at a hundred and ten, um, families that, that paid their full tuition, you know, five hundred dollars refund per person would equal about fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars. Um, so I'm, I'm looking in that ballpark figure. I mean, I need guidance from school committee on what their thoughts are, but I also have to realize that next year we are still gonna have our high touch cleaning. Um, and we're not really sure what other protocols we're gonna have based on COVID in the fall, because the fall is not here. So we are, you know, we're financially supporting a nurse, um, currently through the S R funds, um, for part-time custodians, for high-touch cleaning, these tents, a, a lot of those things are coming out of the grant. So, um, hopefully next year, we're gonna continue to fund them through the grant.
We also don't know, fully know the impact of whatever spacing restrictions might be in our classes on class size, as our enrollments keep growing. You know, we're kind of playing that out, and we know, and S R right now, I believe S R three is, from what I understand, sort of tied up at the federal level. So unfortunately, it's kind of, we already have a link with that. We don't really know when we're gonna get it.
Right, and they are also cautioning us to be thoughtful about, um, keeping that money for future, for future things that are coming, come up related to the impact of COVID. So, that's the other thing, they don't want us to spend it all upfront. They don't want to spend it all right away. It's to really get us and ease us back in too, so, um, be, you know, thoughtful about stretching that money out.
So do we know right now what we already have committed of that money toward expenses that we're going to incur?
Um, not, not, not a definitive figure. Like I said, you know, we've got the four high-touch, high-time custodians. We've got the, we've got the nurse, um, if we continue with the tents, um, the sanitizing and cleaning, you know, depending on what they tell us. So, I mean, we haven't sat down, um, because we haven't really been given a, a firm figure or a firm date. Um, and I mean, my, my only concern is with, um, with the, the lift of some of our restrictions, i- are they going to reconsider the S R three? I don't, I don't know.
All right, so. Maybe we can hear from other members of the
Ashley, you're breaking up a little bit.
Yeah, your, your audio's
Oh, sorry. I wanted to, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, I just wanted to, and, and wanted to move on to other members of the committee, and if it's okay, maybe I'll have another question or two after we hear from them.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, we'll leave it to you, Chair McClellan, to take any questions.
We'll come back to you after you've heard more thoughts. Uh, Mr. Kearney, you're up next. What are your thoughts?
Well, this is great, exciting news. Um, Ms. Owens, thank you for, um, looking into this. I think that there's some families that are gonna be real excited about this. Um, it's something that I think that we've been all trying to, come up with a solution, and this is a, this is something, and, um, you know, I appreciate, yeah, and I'm sure the families do for you doing that, so, thank you. Um, that said, I, I think, you know, I, I, I honestly, I, I, I personally like to see, um, kindergarten come free for cohesive kids. Uh, in the future, and I know that's something that's been percolating around the town, but I think this just goes to show that, you know, we work together that we can do that. So if we could, you know, have an ultimate goal in the future to, to fund kindergarten, uh, you know, I think that's something we should do. We should absolutely do that. We're one of only, uh, eighty-six percent of the state covers, covers kindergarten, and one of, we're one of the communities that don't. Um, so, I, I, you know, this is a step forward, uh, and, and I appreciate it because I know this has been hard times for families out there, and I, I just appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar.
Um, thank you, Mrs. Owen. I do have a question, because we're talking about the S R three grant, which is, you know, potentially forthcoming. I, I don't want to jump ahead to the monthly finance report, but there's, the fund balance in the S R two grant is a little over a hundred thousand dollars. Is that all been earmarked?
Yes.
It has?
Yes.
For expenditure between now and the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Can any of that, that earmarking be postponed until the S R three grant comes through?
Um, some of its salaries, again, um, because we've, because we've exhausted the S R one. Um, we've had multiple grants. Um, we, the purchase of all, all the, all the new furniture that we've needed, um, came out of the S R two, so, and now we're funding the, the full part-time custodians for the remainder of the year, the nurse. Um, trying to think what else. There was quite a bit of tents, um, that we had to purchase because some were damaged. So I'm, I, I'm not sure if there'll be anything remaining from the S R two. Um, it does roll into next year. So, possibly. Um, it's also gonna depend on how, you know, how the year ends as a whole. I, I mean, I know that's not the answer. I don't have a definitive answer, really. Um, it has been earmarked. I mean, we had to earmark um, when we wrote the grant.
Right.
So.
Right, uh, understood. I'm just, I'm just thinking, because of the question marks surrounding S R three, could, you know, and there's not, there's only a thousand dollars encumbered, leaving the fund balance at a hundred thousand. I, I was just wondering if, if maybe some of those extraordinary expenses, like the nurse or the, the four part-time custodians, if we could look at, and I know our operational budget is tight, um, maybe swing some of that. I, I don't know, I'd be happy to come in and talk to you about it, but I just, I think if it's there, and it, if, I guess my question is, if, if our grant person at the Department of Ed says it's okay for S R three, is it okay for S R two?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay. Because I think I'd like to see if we can get it resolved sooner rather than later, and if we can use existing funds and defer, you know, payment on or further expenditures.
Certainly. I would always do an amendment, um, I, like I said, I don't, I don't have the information in front of me, but we could always do an amendment to the S R two, um, if there are funds that we could utilize sooner rather than later.
Okay, all right.
Some type of refund.
Sue, can I ask, are you, are you confident we can do the five hundred dollar refund for, for families? Or do you think that might be too bold at this point?
I'm confident probably with the five hundred, which is why I, I, um, came up with a lower figure. I mean, I know the tuition's, you know, higher than that, um, but it was something that I thought could possibly be doable.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, I was just trying to get
It's okay. No, I mean, that's why, like I said, it's, you know, I was conservative with the, the amount of the refund. Um, just thinking, you know, how much, um, how many, how many families and how much it would be. So they said fifty to sixty thousand dollars, um, is, is, I'm pretty confident we could do.
Okay.
Definitely with, with the grant, um.
That's good. That, that's, that's good. That's good to know. Just gives the commi- committee a sense of, you know, what we feel pretty confident about doing.
Okay, Mrs. St. Orange.
Yeah, I guess just to piggyback on Mrs. Mar's question, um, kind of in terms of, of what the S R two was intended for, and now that we have relaxed masking protocol, I'm just curious about like what P P E was ordered, or like what was planning to be ordered, and if we're using that much, and if we continue to need to stock as much as we were planning on, if there's any wiggle room there. Not that I want to be caught with a shortage on any P P E, but I'm just curious as, as things are shifting, if, if that need is as high. Um, I don't even know if that is a part of that, but it's just been in, on my mind. And I'm wondering, Mrs. Owen, before you answer that, did you say when we would find out if we get, if we are going to get it? Is there like a, is there a date on that, did you say? No.
No. No. I'm, I'm definitely, I mean, I don't have the information in front of me. I definitely have, and look at the grant application, um, what the allocations were, and if I, you know, if I can do an amendment to come up with a fifty or sixty um, on S R two, I certainly will, will do it. Um, guidance of school committee and, and Dr. Sullivan. Um, I just, I don't have, I don't have the answer in front of me.
That's fine. Yeah, I'm just curious, or I just, I guess, want to be cautious. I am all about offering a refund if it's feasible. I'm just curious about the logistics, if we don't know if and when the money will be available. Um, I guess I'm just wondering how that works to give money back, or say we're gonna give money back that we don't know if and when we're gonna have it?
Well, the, I do know, the, you know, the S R funding, I think I speak, I think I'd be speaking for all the superintendents when we thought we'd have a, a, a more clear idea anyway about when it was happening at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
It's definitely stuck somewhere. It's, you know, people are saying it's coming, but we just have, we don't really have, uh, anybody giving us an answer as to when we're getting it. It's very, uh, it's just difficult, because everybody's trying to plan fiscally, and, and it's hard. I think, uh, you know, I'm sure even Sue probably thought you were gonna have that information by now as well. I think we even thought it might be coming this past week, and it didn't come. So that's a little bit, uh, little, little, little difficult, is, you know, trying to figure out everything, but, um, anyway, I just want to put that out there.
Oh, yeah, and I appreciate that, and I feel like the way that news is being released right now is maybe not ideal in terms of when announcements are made and not made. So I understand that. It's no one's, you know, no one here is stopping that from happening. It's just at the state level. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no one has indicated it isn't coming. We haven't heard that at all. I mean, it's still coming. It just seems to be between the federal and the state. Not there yet.
Okay. I guess I just don't understand how we vote on a yes or no when we don't have a money in front of us. I don't know. Maybe that's a silly question, but
No.
I just.
I'm about to suggest that we do that.
Okay, great.
So, um, this is, uh, fairly frustrating, because I, you know, wouldn't have put this on here. I, I, I don't think it's, it's, I, I think it's probably a product of the fact that, uh, our expectations were not met in terms of where this is coming from. Um, and so I think this, in talking, discussing this issue with, uh, Ms. Owen, I think we were both of the, uh, position that we would be in a situation where we would obtain the grant money by now. Um, now, uh, because I would not have put the kindergarten tuition issue on an agenda if I thought we were going to be in a sort of half-baked posture. Um, so, um, that said, i- you know, i- it begs the question that, that Mrs. Mar asked, and that is, okay, well, if we were basing this on the S R three, uh, but we have, and that, that's not forthcoming yet, uh, but we have S R two, can we sort of shift the earmarking, you know, uh, from one to the other so that we can deal with this now? It seems like the answer to that is no. Um, and so I, I feel like we just lock into the S R three, and it's all dependent on the S R three, which really, we really have no control over. We've applied for it. We have, uh, we have earmarked funds for the kindergarten tuition issue. Um, Ms. Owen has stated that she feels five hundred is, uh, doable, which is, um, appropriate, because I believe, and Mrs. St. Orange, I believe you'll have personal knowledge of this. Um, the kindergarten families last year, I think, received a five hundred dollar, um, reimbursement. I would not, um, be supportive of a reimbursement that exceeds that, because frankly, I feel that last year's kindergarten families got a, uh, rawer deal, um, than this year's, even though everything was below value, um, just because of the circumstances of the pandemic. Um, last year, um, kindergarten students and families were unceremoniously stripped of in-person learning without any sort of, uh, remote learning plan, uh, or str- structure in place. So, um, I would argue that that is a worse situation to find yourself in. Those families, I believe, were, uh, were given a five hundred dollar reimbursement. So, um, it would be, uh, in line with that, I think, to ensure that there's some equity across the board. Uh, five hundred dollars makes sense. Now, I think that we can vote. We've already applied for it using that. And, uh, I do see Q and As coming in from the community, um, and I'll get to them in a minute. But I do think that where we've already applied for, we've already earmarked it for the K, K tuition. Mrs. Mrs. Owen has done a, Ms. Owen has done a wonderful job in, um, in identifying this source, so that we can actually make this happen, because we could not have made it happen out of, out of our budget. Why don't we just vote on giving X amount of dollars to the kindergarten families, contingent upon receiving the, the S R three grant? And if we do, then we are able to offer that, that, that tuition, and that's the answer. That's what we're able to offer. That would be my suggested course of action. Um, and then it's done, and when the money comes in, Ms. Owen knows that she has the authority to, to make that happen. And, um, she can obviously, you know, the community will be updated as to if and when that, that money is received. That's, that's my suggestion. Um, I am just gonna turn to a, um, and we'll, we'll, the, the committee members will have more time to talk. I know that at least one of you expressed an interest in, in having some follow-up comments, but just gonna turn to a Q and A coming in from our stakeholders. Uh, Ms. Jenna Cunningham, um, who did not state her address, but I believe she lives on Hill Street, um, asks, why did this come to a vote? In past discussions during meetings, a figure of one thousand dollars for potential voted re- partial refund was noted. I'm surprised to hear five hundred dollars is the goal tonight, and now is, and now is maybe voted down. Tuition was thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. We're aware of how much the tuition is. The issue here is that, uh, when I said thousand dollars at the other meeting, I know I said it, I don't know if anyone else did. I was saying that is the rough calculation, if you sort of prorate it out, if you figure out how much kindergarten is per day, it's roughly, I believe, twenty dollars a day, and then if you figure out how many in-person days were not held that would have normally been held, the figure was roughly around a thousand dollars. Um, and it was probably the same for, if not more, for last year's kindergarten families. This isn't a exact figure. It's not an exact refund. It's not, that, that's just, we, we, I, I, my position is that we're not able to do that. Ms. Owen is telling us that five hundred dollars is manageable. Um, a thousand dollars, uh, per, you know, be over a hundred thousand dollars that we're spending, and that is an unmanageable amount, so we're trying to do something. Um, folks, uh, may very well be unhappy with that amount, but that's what we're able to do, and it's better than nothing, which, um, you know, is a possibility still, because we haven't gotten this, and, um, which is troubling. And, uh, that's just the state of affairs. And, and I'm just learning this now, that we, that the S R is sort of locked up somewhere, S R three, I don't know where it is. I, I know that we expect it to be in a different situation now, or like I said, I certainly wouldn't have put this on the agenda. But, um, anyway, um, Mrs. Colery, I think you wanted to say something else.
I just wanted to know, um, what the status is. I saw in the monthly update that there's approximately fifty thousand dollars in the kindergarten account, and that there's not any money encumbered right now. What is the status of that account, Mrs. Owen? Do you know?
I do. So, um, in order to, to finish out the year, like, I think there's six or seven more teacher payrolls, um, which, which is approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars, so that account is going to run, um, into the negative.
Thank you. How did we do on, on families paying after requesting that they pay?
Every, every family, um, either paid or is on a payment plan now.
Oh, well, that's good news. Thank you.
So we appreciate that, that they, they at least came through and, and paid the tuitions. We needed to cover the teacher salaries.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Just jump right in, I, because, you know, I don't know who wants to go and who doesn't, so, uh, just, just jump right in. Mrs. Marr, you're muted still.
The revolving fund won't go to zero. I mean, won't go to the negative. The differential between the salaries and the fifty-five thousand that's in there will come out of the operational budget.
Correct. Yeah, it can't, we can't let it end in, in the negative, but it will, um.
It'll go to zero.
It will go to zero.
Okay. Um, that was my first thing. And then my, my second, I just want to clarify. That you have an opportunity to potentially write an amendment to the S R two grant. And relook at the balance of expenditures you were planning out of the S R two grant. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, because perhaps some of those, to Mrs. Saint Ange's point, you know, can be deferred if it's P P E. Or, or anything along those lines. Um, I would recommend that. And then Chairman McClellan, I might recommend we have a motion. To approve up to five hundred dollar reimbursement pending. The, uh, receipt of the S R three grant and just have it be administered by the central office.
I think that's a great motion, Mrs. Marr. Um, let's just, can we just table that for one minute because there's another comment from the community, then, then maybe, uh, you can make that motion, Mrs. Marr?
Sure.
Um, Ms. Jenna, Ms. Just, Mrs. Jenna Cunningham follows up asking, do you have the accurate number of kindergarten families that paid full tuition? It's important when considering the amount to be earmarked for this reimbursement. I think Mrs. Claire is sort of just asked you that, Ms. Owen, but, um. I, I guess maybe she's asking for the actual number of families that have paid in full.
Um. I don't, I don't have the number in front of me of how many have paid in full, but every, almost all families have paid in full. And there are probably five or six are on a payment plan that are going to be paid, um, by the end of June.
And what kind of card enrollment?
Hundred and ten, um, hundred and ten families.
Okay. Okay.
I just have a clarifying question, and, and it maybe goes without saying, but we keep talking about five hundred dollars per kindergarten family. And I'm assuming we actually mean five hundred dollars per kindergarten tuition for families with multiple kindergarteners, correct? Okay, just making sure. Yep.
Sorry.
That's fine. Just clarifying.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Saint John, Saint Ange. That is a, a, an important clarification. Um, Mrs. Marr, do you want to make that? Do you wish to make that motion that you just, uh, articulated a moment ago?
Um, if we're. Finished with our comments and deliberations, sure. Um, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the, uh, business manager and superintendent. To reimburse up to five hundred dollars per. Full-time kindergarten student. If and when the S R three grant comes through.
Motion made by Mrs. Marr. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kaleri. All in favor, Mrs. Kaleri?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Marr?
Hi.
Mrs. Saint Ange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan. The motion unanimously passes. Dr. Sullivan, you are, uh, I guess free to. Work that out once we know what we're working with through the S R three funds.
Yes, thank, thank you. And, you know, apologize for not having the information about S R that could really, uh. Springboard this into action, but it's good to know we have the support of the school committee for something I think everybody wants to try to do. Uh, you know, and I think we're confident we can do it.
And I will follow up, um, I will follow up once I, um, look at the grant application for S R two. And see how it's written and, and what's been expended or earmarked and what we could possibly shift towards S R three. In order to make it happen sooner.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I know some of the families are disappointed, but we are, uh, we're playing the cards that we've been dealt. And, um, this is what we can offer you.
And there's always a school committee June second where we can give you more information. So we're, you know, just know we're. We're, we're working on it and trying to get that refund to be as, as high as we, we, we can to, you know, to meet the, meet the gap there.
Thank you all. Um, Dr. Sullivan, does that conclude the superintendent's report?
I believe it does. Yes, it does. There's, well, there's a gift on the agenda and, uh, I think, um. It was noted to you that that gift was sent erroneously. It was gifted and then taken away. No, just it was, it was not meant for us and it was put on the agenda. So apologies for that. There's no gift.
Okay, thank you. Um, so turning to the finance report, uh, Ms. Susan Owen, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Yeah, can you, can I share my screen?
Yes, you can share. I, if you have any troubles, I, I think I have it on, I can get it up there too.
Okay. Um, so what I tried to do. For, for this report is give a comparison. Say no, Mrs. Marr has, you know, has mentioned that it's, it's helpful when you have comparisons. Um, in the packet, I know. There was, um. A replacement page. So this, this page, the school budget summary is for last year, nineteen twenty. And it gives you an idea of, um, where we were last time at this time. And we were at, um, about seventy-three percent. Um, the, the form for the budget summary for. Twenty twenty-one, um. Is we're at seventy-five point eight percent. So, um, we're in the ballpark. Um, we're really at eighty-three percent. Um, through the school year, so we're, we're still under where we need to be. Um, even though some of our accounts seem to be over budgeted. And I know that's a concern for some. So I gave you the comparison of those two. The, the summary budget to actual. Again, um, the key, the key things to look at are again, um. Special education. Uh, all the areas that are. Let's see, where are we? Nope, went right by it. Special education, transportation and, um, tuitions are definitely. Um, a significant. Um, concern where, you know, we've had several settlements. We've had some, some kiddos go out. Um, so we're looking at a two, two to three hundred thousand dollar over budget in the special education department. Typically, in, in past years, we've purchased a, a, bought ahead tuitions. And that amount of money for the following year. Obviously, this year, we're not going to be able to buy any tuitions. Um, so I'm watching the bottom line very carefully, um, because there are other, uh, other departments and areas in the budget. That are underutilized, underbud, uh, under, underspent, um, which hopefully will balance us by the end of the year. Let's see, next. So, I mean, right now, if you look at the bottom number, unencumbered amount is, is five, five million sixty-two. So I have, um, in the last week or so, I, I put in a, what I call a dummy purchase order. With what the remaining payrolls are going to be. And the remaining payrolls are about four million. Um, so that leaves us about a million dollars of unencumbered funding to pay. All the unanticipated expenses coming through. Um, the salaries that are not on an annualized setting like custodians, the cafeteria. Um, they put, they have to fill out time slips, a substitute teachers. Um, and then the, you know, the, this, I've, I've encouraged this morning, I, we met, when we met, um, with administration. I encourage them to make sure anything they know of has to, has to be put on a purchase order so we can. Um, see what our bottom line is going to look like. Um, I've also asked them to look through if they have open purchase orders that have been sitting out there for a while. If they no longer need them, please liquidate them and close them out, which will free up money. Um, so we're going to start that process now and watch, watch what we're, we're paying out, um, very carefully so that we don't, um, run into a problem. You know, if, if we end the fiscal year, um. Heading into the negative, we do have the sped stabilization fund, which is pretty much at its maximum now. It's, I think it's. At three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, we, we could always go to them to, to select board and ask. For the money to be transferred over to cover our unanticipated costs that came through. I don't know if there's any questions on any of that.
I have a question.
Okay.
Karen. Um, under, it might be more appropriate for Dr. Collins. Um, under, in, in your, um, cost center. Three sixteen for curriculum, um, under expenses. Um, you've been very good this year. There's, you haven't spent anything, really. Yeah, are, are, is, is there, are, are there invoices for PD coming or other curriculum programs or? I'm just curious. She's still with us?
I thought I was unmuted. Sorry. Um, so, yes, so, yes, I am going to spend more, but what happened was because we received S R money also. Um, and a lot of the professional development ended up falling under. The criteria for the grant, we ended up using that. Um, so which, I'm just pulling through, because which line specifically you're looking at?
I, I'm actually just looking at the summary that Ms. Owen's just presented. So I'm not, I'm not even looking at the specific.
Oh, you're not looking at the.
Just at your, um, account fifty-two hundred, not the individual line items.
Oh, okay. Well, some of this too has to do with. Um, courses that teachers take. So there's a certain amount allotted, right? So this is all the same line, right? So.
There's almost eighty thou, there's almost eighty thousand dollars in, in PD, spend PD money.
Right. So there's this, so there's about sixty-two thousand dollars every year that's allotted for, um, teachers to take courses. Um, conference money, that number is, um. Still high because we haven't had as many courses as we would know. Teachers aren't taking as many courses as they normally would. We provided a lot of courses and PD. Um, and so for them to then go over and above and be taking courses, they're really, they're tired. And unless they're in program specifically around getting their masters or CAGs, um, there hasn't been as much. So, um, I've been trying to get teachers to go to conferences. I've been working with Lisa Raden. Around offering to pay for mass queue and things that in the past we could pay for some, but we have, we have more money. So. You're right, it is high. So, um, I'm looking at, do you, um, using some of these other money for some. PD to support the math, um, program at the elementary level. We are looking at literacy. To be able to use money for that. Um, so we got grants and. It was really exciting to get these grants and we also got other grants. We got, um, a, um, remote learning. Grant. We got, we received that this year. We also, and that was probably, hmm, was that about eighteen thousand? So I'm talking off the top of my head. Um, we received another grant for the summer learning program. That was another twenty-two thousand. We had a grant for, um. The other, I'm drawing, oh, with student opportunity, yeah, for five thousand. So we ended up getting more money than we had expected. Um, we are spending them as quickly as we can, but, um. So it will, it will go down. Um, but the course one, that's a tough one. Like.
And it's, it's, it's surprising to me because, well, it is and it isn't, you know, because of COVID and, and, and. The, the strain the teachers were under and, and all of, all of what they had to go through for most of, of the year. But it's such a sticking point negotiations. And prior to, we had just implemented a new system where. Um, come August of the fiscal year, that money would all have been allocated because teachers would have jumped up for the whole year. And now, now we're in more of a, a triennial kind of, uh, process for it. Um, but that, that's a huge, that has always been a very, very big part of contract negotiations.
And it, and usually, and for, so I've, it's only my second year, but the, last year we went through most of it. So people were taking courses. So, um, there was a little bit of a slowdown, obviously. Because of going through COVID at this, you know, that half the year, but. Um, yeah, there just hasn't been, and people are tired. And again, we provided a lot of professional development for them. We did a lot of courses through EdTech teacher. We brought in speakers to do work with them and addressing some of those areas that they really wanted to know about. Um, and that was kind of, you know, that part in the beginning of the year when we had those extra days, plus we had professional development throughout the year. So. It, yeah, it's a little tricky, but we are working to, um, be creative in how we're. We're using the money for professional development to support things that are going on right now. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Anyone else? So the ne, the next slide is just our, our, our grants. It gives you, uh, an idea of all the grants and you can see the first one, two, three, four. Five are all COVID related, including the summer vacation learning. I mean. Um, so we've, we've, we've gotten an abundance of money and support from the state, which is nice. It shows us what, you know, what we've spent. What's encumbered, um, and what the fund balances us. So, you know, two point one million in grant funding. We received from, from the government. Um, we have a balance right now of about three hundred and thirty thousand. That, you know, um, is unencumbered. Doesn't mean it's, you know, not going to be spent. It, it just could be for things other than salaries. Let's see, the next slide is our revol, our revolving accounts. Um, again, same thing, um. The after-school program, um, is, is in the negative, but it's, it's technically not. It's just a matter of. Um, town accountant has to do some transfers of the funding, um, and turnovers and that, that amount will be back up on the positives. Um, the rest of the, the rest of the, um, revolving funds you can see, it's this, you know, kindergarten. Um, we're down to fifty-five thousand. We have eighty-eight thousand dollars more in salaries. Um, so that does show that there, there won't be anything left in the kindergarten revolving. Um, transportation revolving, there's so many there. We may have to utilize that to offset. Um, the negative number in our school budget for transportation. Um, we just have to see how the end of the year plays out. Um, if the funding, um, at the end of the year in the school budget, you know. Comes in, um. At zero or more, then we, we won't have to transfer, um, any of the money, but that, those are discussions that happen. Um, over the course of the next few weeks or months. And again, it shows us, you know, additional funding, um, this one point nine million dollars in revolving account, um, funding that we receive. So between, um, the grants and revolving, we have, um, about three point one million. Um, in additional funding that isn't, um, coming from the town or local receipts through our school budget.
Can I just make a comment, Ms. Owens, before you move on?
Sure.
On, on that screen. So just for, um, comparison sake, a year ago in kindergarten, we had a, almost a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Um, in our revolving account and which, um, allowed. To Chairman McClellan's earlier point, the ability to refund, um, some of the money. Um, I have, uh, two questions. Um. One, under the facility, use, school use of facilities revolving, there's about fifty-three thousand dollars in that account. Um, compared to a little less than eight thousand last year. One of the things we didn't get funded for, for capital budgets was the painting and cove base replacement. Um, in the lower and upper lobbies of the, um. High school, middle school gymnasium and cafeteria. And I know this, uh, I, I don't know if this has been earmarked for other. Projects over the summertime, but maybe we could take a look at, I, I don't think we could do both the painting and the cove base, but. Maybe we could take a look at that and utilize some of this money.
Well, I know facilities, Nick facilities said that they will, they were going to take care of the cove base and the painting just in-house, uh, outside of capital. So I can definitely talk to him about it as well.
Okay. Um, but I'm, I'm sure there are a lot of other areas in our buildings that could use a spruce up. And this is a, a nice bucket of money to use for that.
Absolutely.
Um, and then the school lunch, um, you know, that's quite a healthy account. Um. And, and I apologize, I should know better. I should know the answer to this. Because of COVID, school lunch has been subsidized by, um. Federal government, you, the USDA, is that correct this year?
So our lunches are free.
All of our lunches are free. Okay.
Next year, and next year, they're all free again.
Next year as well.
Next year as well. So I did talk to, um, food service director, um, actually this morning about, um, ideas. And I guess before COVID hit, she was trying to reconfigure the middle school, high school cafeteria. Um, to add, um, some different stations and then that got. Brought to a screeching halt with COVID. Um, but she said definitely, you know, in the fall, if. Things are moving in the right direction, she could reconsider, um, and start looking at redesigning the kitchen. And bringing in some more food stations or upgrades. Um, so I know she's thinking of that and she's also thinking of, um, possibly hiring. I think it, Dear Hill, they have hired a, a substitute for the year, and I think she's looking to add that position permanently.
Well, I think. Well, I think, you know, that this, I think that's awesome. And I just think we have an opportunity here to make some upgrades in our, our, our food service facilities. I, you know, just throwing out, do we need, need another van, you know, another food service van to transport food from the high school to the elementary schools? And just so that everyone understands, the money in this revolving account can only be used to fund things that pertain to the food service portion of our district. So, I don't want anyone to think, well, why can't we use this money to fund kindergarten to, you know, rebates or refunds? It, it can't, it has to by law stay within the food service area. Is that correct, Ms. Owen?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore, anyone else? Okay, moving on, Ms. Owen.
Sure, so this again is just a historical of the last five years on what the grants have looked like and what we've received. You can obviously see in FY21, the COVID-related grants right off the top. Almost a million dollars. This is just more of a historical over the years. This is the capital outlay balances. Spoke to the town accountant, Don Pyatt. He's going to start reallocating or, for lack of a better word, taking back some of the money that's not being used and reallocating it to other areas in capital. So, the Chromebooks, he talked to Ron Manat about the seventy-five hundred dollars is, he's looking at, let's see, there's a couple other ones. The Aspen, Ron told him we were done with that, so there's a thousand dollars there. Cohasset Middle School entrance is fifty-nine hundred dollars, so some of that money you'll see either be, you know, transferred, I'm not exactly sure where it goes. I know it goes probably back to capital somewhere and gets reallocated. So, it just kind of shows you, I do know that the repair, or the split AC bandrooms was apparently done last weekend, so that should be coming off the list. And the only thing left for this year are the courtyard doors at Deer Hill, which he said he was chasing after the company to find out when we would be receiving it. They gave him a 12 to 14 weekly way because the product is not coming directly from, I want, I want to say it was hull glass, but I'm not sure. It's not coming directly from them, so it's being special made, and that's what the holdup is.
The most ridiculously stupid thing I have ever witnessed in my life, how long that's taking.
This, this is the bus maintenance, what we've spent for the year, broken down by, you know, what was spent on drug testing, employee costs, their licenses and renewals, respect inspections. The other thing I'm still, I'm still trying to put my hands on is the fuel. I'm waiting for DPW to get back to me with what, what we have to spend in fuel, which I'd really like to know. This is just a historical over the last few years on what the bus maintenance and repairs looked like. That pretty much concludes the, the financial piece. Again, like I said, we're watching the bottom line. We have about a million left over, which is, you know, similar to what we had last year, we had 1.3. So, you know, we're still in line where we should be, but definitely looking closely and watching it. I don't know if there's any questions regarding that report, but then, you know, I'm just going to go on real brief about, you know, exciting news that's been going on behind the scenes at the business office, what, what we've done. We currently utilize MySchoolBox, or have been using MySchoolBox for school lunches. We've now expanded it, we were utilizing MCC, which we haven't had a contract with in over fifteen years. It's just kind of been rolling from year to year to year, so we've notified them that we're no longer going to utilize them after June 30th. They were charging up to an eight percent per transaction for the families that were utilizing it. The MySchoolBox is under three percent, right around that ballpark area. And MySchoolBox, we, we just opened it up for transportation. We've already collected probably thirty thousand dollars in transportation fees online. I've heard great things about it. Little, you know, a little bumpy getting it up and running, but we're going to start opening the doors for all the other areas that we could, you know, kindergarten, preschool, athletics, everything can run right through MySchoolBox, which is really good. Parents, most parents and families, you know, in school districts are familiar with the MySchoolBox, so it should be a definite asset moving forward. And I just, I gave you some highlights of it. The other thing that we've talked about is we put in, we, we put in for, we have new software for our bus routes. Mr. and Mrs. Laird can't do bus routes for the rest of our Cohasset life, so we've purchased a software, or I should say, the Transportation Department purchased a software that will do the routing for us, and it exports the information right out of Aspen on a nightly basis. So, the IT department has worked with, with TransFinder, so the information gets exported every night. So, if there's a new student, it pops up the next morning, and we can handle plugging them right into a route. And then last but not least, MySchoolRec, which goes along with the school facilities, so it's kind of been disconnected, I think, on basically calendar-wise, on who's renting what, when and where. So, this is MyRec, Steve Rotandi and Jerry and I talked about. This is up and running, this is one calendar online that anyone who needs to rent can go online and look. They cannot book anything until they pay the fee. So, we're not chasing fees because it won't allow them to book a field or, well, right now it's only the fields that we're, we're utilizing outside, but it won't let them book it without paying, so that kind of eliminates some of the chasing down of the money and the billing and all that.
This, this is already in place right now and functioning well, correct?
Yes. Yes. Not quite up and running is the TransFinder for the route, which we won't be doing till the summer anyways. The, the only other thing I wanted to bring up was just, just an FYI. Facilities has been working for a few years, I'm not sure if school committee members were aware of it or not, on redoing our lighting. So, Facilities has worked with a joint company that's going to come in and change all the fluorescent lights to LED. No, no direct cost to the district. What happens is they come in, they'll do all our common areas. We're not doing classrooms right now, and the savings, the savings will be recognized the first few years through their, through our invoicing, and that's how they get, that's how the company gets paid. So, they'll, they'll just take it from the savings, and then after three years, we will absorb all the savings, which could be, ballpark is, is seventy, eighty thousand dollars per year in electricity utilities. So, it's definitely going to be a savings, they're going to start that project over the summer. The other project they're working on is they've, they've widened the road behind Deer Hill by emergency management, that also, I guess, has been in the works for a few years. They're, they're going to widen that road, and they're going to put in a handicap parking spot, which I guess we're required to have up by vehicle, so those are just things that are up and coming and happening. I think that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank, any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Mrs. Moore.
So, on myrec.com, oh, I just lost my question. Sorry. But you had, you had mentioned that we're using it now for the outdoor fields, okay, so here's my question. We last took a vote to allow renting our outdoor facilities for the spring season. Are we going to have to take a vote, or is, has there been any conversation based on this week's events about indoor facilities for the summer, such as the auditorium, or the cafeterias, or the gyms, or allowing the recreation department access?
Question.
There hasn't been any discussion yet. We have our, we have a town meeting tomorrow, and that's something that, you know, I can, I can ask about, but I, I don't, I haven't heard anything about the rental of our facilities from, desire from anybody, have you, in, in, indoors, Sue?
No. And right now, when MyRec is blocked, so they don't have the ability to even look to rent anything. But at some point, we probably should have that, that discussion on, you know, what we want to do going forward.
I think we should, obviously, when we're ready to take another vote to get back to where we originally were, or if there are any type of ramifications to whatever the state of the COVID emergency is, to put them in place. But I, I think right now, we certainly are not in a position to be letting anyone use our indoor interior facilities until school committee votes that through, the way we've done things.
And that's not only ended tonight, so just a reminder, you know, we can put that on if someone wants that on the agenda. We want to vote on that, let me know, I'll put it on the agenda, I send it around to everyone, you guys can let me know, okay? It's eight o'clock at night right now, we are a little more than half into this meeting, okay? We have to move into executive session, let's keep this rolling, okay? So, are there any other questions for Ms. Owen? Okay, thank you, Ms. Owen, for all that work, thank you so much for the information. We're moving on to the school committee comments and communication section. First, under that section is the review of the policies, it's listed as item number E1 in your packets. Ms. Cleary and, excuse me, Mrs. Cleary and Mrs. St. Orange, I believe, were kind enough to put this together. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review it, I think there's recommendations on the cover page, so if there are any discussion points, just jump right in, I don't think I need to call on everyone, and then, you know, anyone's welcome to make a motion to accept or adopt the recommendations. But I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to restrict discussion, I'm just sort of reiterating that we need to keep moving, so. Please, please add comments if you have, you know, it's their policies, it's important, it's one of our major, you know, sort of parts of our purview. Not trying to rush through it, but I just want to keep it concise, so, anything from anyone? Okay, I'm, as last time, I mean, this is really well done, guys, and, you know, it's very easily sort of interpreted, and I think it makes sense, it's logical. Like last time, I'm, I'm comfortable with how it is, so I don't know if there's a motion to accept the recommendations of the policy subcommittee at this time? Anyone can make that. Okay, thank you, motion made by Mrs. Cleary, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney, although I don't know if Mrs. Cleary is trying to say something else.
Maybe, but I really, yeah.
Mrs. Cleary, I have no idea what you just said, you, you were breaking up, what's, what's going on?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, the motion is made by Mrs. Cleary, and the motion was seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries, so those policy revisions will be accepted and adopted. Thank you very much for the work that went into that, I know it's a continuing project, and it's a big project, an important project, sort of bringing things up to date, so thank you, guys. Next, School Facilities Committee, I don't have any, I don't have any significant or substantive updates on that, I'd just like it to be on the agenda so that we're always thinking about it, because we need new schools, in my opinion, and middle high school. Reports from subcommittees, any reports, we'll go around the table, Mrs. Cleary, any reports?
No, no.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Cleary, Mr. Kearney, any reports?
Yes, we had a CPAC meeting this week, it was great. Also, I reached out to the elderly affairs and trying to get the silver sneaker, well, silver sneaker, what am I talking about? It's a, it's a, it's a pass for the elderly folks that want to go to a sporting event, and they get a free pass. So, I'm trying to work with them to try to bring that back. Yeah, and, and just grateful for everything that's going on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kearney, Mrs. Moore, do you have any reports?
I'll distribute the annual reports to the Cohasset Select Board from the PEB committee, and I won't get into the nuts and bolts of the report. Needless to say, the lie, the town's liability for post-employment benefits, which essentially is health insurance for retired Cohasset employees, is escalating. Last summer, it was in the thirty-six million dollar range, it's now at seventy-two million dollar range, and the number fluctuates based on the discount rate and healthcare cost trends and actuarial tables that determine, you know, the lifespan of our employees. And so, I'll send, I'll send this out. They're also recommending permanent funding solutions to the Select Board that happen every year without fail, and one of which is the, once the Norfolk County Pension Fund is fully funded, the allocations that have been going into that, fifty percent move into PEB, and then that will get post-employment benefit fund satisfied through twenty, up in the year of 2049. So, it's pretty dry material, but it's something we always have to consider when we're looking at staff and, and hiring. Town meeting is Monday night, May 24th, six o'clock, the Music Circus, it's in the same format as last year, a drive-in presentation. They will have a, a space at the front for town board members to, to sit. You're welcome to sit in your car and watch, or sit up front. But we have a lot on the, on the warrant that was, everyone received at home in the mail between our capital budget allocations, for which they were very generous, as well as the CPC for funding for the track. So, that's on May 24th. Also, on town meeting, and I spoke to Dr. Sullivan about this, and it's a pleasant surprise, but the town is, is making a deposit into the Special Education Stabilization Fund of seventy-five thousand dollars coming out of free cash. So, typically, we've been making deposits every year into it, they started the fund for us, and we've been putting deposits into it, and based on their municipal, you know, their financial position, they, they're making this deposit for us. So, to Mrs. Owen's earlier point, we are probably at or near reaching our ceiling of our two percent allocation of net school spending.
Mrs. Moore, would you mind just, just briefly summarizing what this special, the, the stabilization sped fund is for, what that's allocated for?
Special Education Stabilization Fund was formulated under the Massachusetts Municipal Modernization Act, and it's essentially a savings account that any public school district can have to support and finance unforeseen and unexpected special education costs that happen after the budget, such as new students moving in, so when you certify your budget, which will be on May 24th, if we have new students move in during the summer of next year that require services that we didn't budget for and can't accommodate, we can pull from this fund to finance those services. And it's most, most every line out of special education, and it can only be used for that. And a withdrawal from the fund is triggered by a majority vote of the school committee and a majority vote of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore, just want to make sure everyone knows what it is when we're talking about all these stuff, I don't know some of it too, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all, Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. St. Orange?
Um, I met with the Deer Hill School Council, and we were going over the handbook, and one question that came up that I didn't know the answer to, and I think Dr. Sullivan, you will. Principal Sullivan was, was wondering if, if there was a kind of timeline, and maybe she's already asked you for when we will be looking at the school handbooks this summer, I feel like everything is kind of on a different timeline than usual.
Well, what we, what we determined here is that we would present the handbooks before the end of the year. I should say before the start of the school year. So, it would be something that would happen probably over the summer, one of the, the summer meetings, and that we would come back in the fall to do the school improvement plan. That's, that would be, that's the, that's the, anyway, the plan that Chair McClellan and I had talked about. So, I don't know that we picked the date for the handbooks yet, but all of the, the principals know that they need to have that ready. So, it's something we should definitely do in the near future. You know, we have two in June, and then when's our next one, not till August, do we have any in July, I can't remember?
We do have July.
You have in July, yep. So, I would think something over the summer.
Okay, great, yeah, I just didn't have a sense of when it would be, but summer makes sense.
Yeah, you, it's really vital to have the handbook in play before the, the year starts.
I agree.
And because we're in. And because we're in strategic planning year, you know, it's, it's really important to incorporate all of our school improvement plans. Under that strategic plan, which is why it sort of falls off cycle and we move into the fall.
Right, to allow for that alignment, right, yeah, awesome, thank you. That's all from me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange, just quickly, collective bargaining, we did, the school committee did ratify. An executive session last meeting, the one-year rollover for the CTA's contract with a two percent increase. And that will be in place for again, one's a one-year rollover, so all the same terms, the same as, as the past contract. Which was up and we could have fully bargained the entire thing, but given obviously this atypical year. It benefited, I think, all parties to be able to give it a little bit more latitude there, so that's the public announcement that, that has been ratified by the CTA as well. And then, you know, we will be bargaining the, the next. Period's contract in the coming months, I suspect we'll start that up, Dr. Sullivan, in the fall sometime likely.
Pretty much right away, I would imagine.
So that's an update there. CPAC related update to, to tack on to Mr. Kearney's, I, I did attend a. Parents' coff, coffee in one of our parents' backyards. This, this week and was, was lucky enough to meet several families, special ed families. It was really enlightening for me and, and just encouraging to see the level of support. And just, again, put some faces to names in this, you know, very important sort of facet of our district's operation. So I, I look forward to more of those, and finally superintendent eval. So everyone should have received from me the evaluation forms that we need to use to evaluate. Dr. Sullivan's performance. And you need to fill that out, everyone needs to do it. And then submit it to me, I think I asked for it by June first, which is a little earlier than I think Mrs. Mar required us to send it to her last year. But I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, you know, you guys can, can meet that ambitious goal. And then I will be able to compile that and hopefully we'll be able to look at that and, and, and publicly discuss that on, at the June sixteenth meeting. Mrs. Mar, while you won't be a member at that juncture. We will have obviously already had your input, which will be incorporated into the overall evaluation. But I also thought that it might be appropriate if you're, if you're available and willing. For that portion of the meeting to sort of promote you to a panelist so that you're able to, you know, make some comments regarding Dr. Sullivan's performance. I'm sure you're interested in doing, given the fact that you've worked with him so extensively. But that's up to you, obviously, there's no obligation once you're not a committee member, but I wanted to make sure you know that you have that opportunity if you would like.
Thank you.
That's all from me, so moving on to the approval minutes, we do have a set of minutes to approve. That is the, those, that's the meeting minutes for the October twenty-first, two thousand twenty regular school committee meeting. I believe everyone was in attendance for that meeting, yes, everyone's in attendance, so everyone can vote on this. But I welcome any sort of comments that anyone might have, if anyone found any sort of corrections or edits to be made. Mrs. Colery, anything?
No, thank you.
Mr. Kearney?
No.
Mrs., Mrs. Mar?
No, no comments.
Mrs. St. Orange?
No comments.
My only issue with this was the, I, I, I guess it, it notes that I was. Recommending that we prohibit trick-or-treating and I, I can't remember if I did, if I was, I was asking, we prohibited altogether or that we restricted, I can't remember. So. Either way, I probably did think it should be prohibited during that period of time, but anyway, I, I don't remember whether I said that word or not. But that's the only real issue I had with it. So if no one has any other additions or revisions, then is there a motion on the floor to approve the minutes for the October twenty-first, two thousand twenty meeting? As presented in your packet?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Kearney, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Colery, all in favor, Mrs. Colery?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Mar?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries, so those minutes are approved as drafted. Thank you, I do not have any other minutes to review at this time. Topics not recently anticipated by the chairman, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. This brings us back to the topic of our emergency meeting last night. I don't know if, I know that, that there was some appetite amongst committee members to discuss the exact wording of the policy. So in order to support that, I did provide a redlined version of our current policy. That is just supposed to be the, you know, form the foundation of some talking points. I, I, I am, I am not, it's, it's up to you all what you want to do, I, I'm not married to. The discussion at this point right now, but if everyone feels that it is something that, that needs to happen. Because it's, you know, it, it needs to be done, you know, fairly promptly, then let's do it. And I, but I, I, you know, I, those suggestions I made were just suggestions, you can completely discard, discard them. I just wanted to have everyone sort of familiar with the language and thinking about changes when we're doing this, rather than sort of trying to do it off the cuff. If we do it at all. So, Mrs. Colery, any thoughts?
I. I think, so my thought was. I, I don't have any, I don't really have anything of substance to add to a discussion, I think these are fine. I also think if there's more deliberation needed, then that would be fine with me too.
Okay, Mr. Kearney, what's your position on, on dealing with this now or, or the revisions I suggested, what, what, what do you?
I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Okay, no, you guys don't have to be fine with it, this was like, I, I hadn't even proofread it, you know, more than once. So it, it, there can very well be, I'm hoping, Mrs. Mar usually has really great suggestions with wording with documents. So Mrs. Mar, what's your position on this, do, do you want to do this now or did you have a chance to review it, I, I sent it kind of late, admittedly.
Yes, I did have a chance to review it and thank you for doing it. Honestly, my first impression was it, was a little too specific, but when I reread it, I thought it was fine. Because I, I envisioned in my head that, well, what if we have a flu outbreak in coacid that doesn't pertain. To, you know, the state or, or Desi, but you have articulated that the local health board is an authority. And it's not all of the authorities, it's any one of the authorities. So I thought we were covered as a single municipality from any kind of broader state of emergency. I feel strongly that we should vote on this and adopt it. Because I don't feel that, with no disrespect intended, I don't feel that our motion yesterday really covers. Us from a policy perspective, because the language we moved yesterday was not in the policy. To begin with, so. That's my position.
Okay, well then, I think we should do it if at least one member feels strongly that we should do it. But, and there's no disrespect taken, Mrs. Mar, I, I just took action that I thought was necessary at that time. So let's, let's do it, so far everyone seems okay with it. Mrs. St. Orange, do you have any addition, like revisions to the language that you might want to contribute?
No, I don't have any revisions, I think this is fine and I feel like it takes into consideration the changing climate. And we just don't know what's going to be happening and what's going to be announced and put into effect that day coming up. So I agree with Mrs. Mar, I think it's important to have something in writing, I think that these revisions look good. And I would feel comfortable going ahead and voting on this this evening.
Okay, well, I drafted it, so I guess I'm okay with it too. And where four very intelligent people reviewed it and don't have any revisions, I'm comfortable with it. So is there a motion on the floor to, to approve this revised policy, which is, I don't have it in front of me, the, the number, what's the?
I think it's ECBFA?
EBCFA. Is there? Is there a motion on the floor to approve the revised version of policy EBCFA as presented on the screen? And is presented to you via email this afternoon?
So moved.
Motion made by, was that Mrs. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. Mar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Colery, all in favor, Mrs. Colery?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Mar?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries, so that will be approved and that is the new language of policy EBCFA. Thank you, guys, for your attention to that. Moving on, I don't have any further topics, not recently anticipated, moving on, we do need to move into executive session for reason. Number three, strategy related to collective bargaining. So I have emailed all of you the Zoom link that we've used in the past successfully for this. So just give me a second to start it. But I would ask either Dr. Sullivan or Dr. Scollins to just keep this one open. Obviously mute it, shut it down, then maybe use your phone or something to go into executive session on that separate link. Okay, is there a motion at this time to move into executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Mar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. St. Orange, all in favor, Mrs. Colery?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mar?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries, so we will enter into executive session this time, give me about thirty seconds. I'll see.
Chairman McClellan, will we be returning to open session for the purpose of closing open meeting?
We will be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's see, we got. We got everyone here except for Ashley and Paul, if we can just, I don't know, I'm sure Ashley's coming back in. We don't really need to. There's Paul. All right, let's just, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-seven PM?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. St. Orange, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kearney, all in favor, Mrs. Colery?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Mar?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, the motion unanimously carries and the meeting is adjourned, thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you all.
Have a great night, everybody, thank you. Bye-bye.